Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the study session of January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three. Donna, can you do a little call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Sure.
Mayor Inesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. All right. Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us about the fleet study.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight's study session is an opportunity to learn about a different program that proactively manages and replaces the city's fleet. Last May, council was presented with the study that looked at establishing an EMR and our equipment maintenance replacement and rental fund. One of the challenges, if you'll recall during the budget process with that program, that really prevented us from implementing it is the amount of money necessary to even begin to get it started. In the first year, it required five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and in year two, it was just a little over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The city's fleet, as a reminder, also through that study, had an average age of fourteen years a year ago. So we're in a place where we need to consider some plan to replace our vehicles. We just started the fiscal year, but we know we need to start planning for two thousand and twenty-four, and it'll prove challenging. So we want to begin the process of preparing for the budget now. This is another reason to begin studying options for replacement, replacement of city vehicles. Additionally, two of council's goals that relate to this are to manage the full life cycle of community assets and develop and maintain transparent, long-range financial plans across all the funds. So not only does managing the assets we have serve as good financial stewardship, but it also serves our public's well-being by counting the fleet that's current, that works well, that mitigates maintenance costs and responds well as needed to serve our employees, who will have reliable, modern, safer vehicles. Many of our public works employees and certainly our police officers work out of vehicles truly as their office environment. So we want to have a plan to be able to keep modern, efficient vehicles in our fleet. So tonight's presentation on the enter- enterprise fleet management model is presented by Joe Hatcher, Senior Account Executive with Enterprise Fleet. He has a presentation, and then you can answer your questions. Again, our purpose is to present information tonight so that we can start to plan in the budget process how we can build a budget that accounts for free replacement. So I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, good to be mayor. Appreciate the time. Yeah, my name is Joe Hatcher. I work with Enterprise Fleet Management, East Edelred, for Washington. Enterprise Fleet Management is a division of Enterprise. Which, you know, most people are quite familiar with. The the shortest way to look at what we do on the fleet management side is, you know, in order to run the rental company that we run, we manage well over two million vehicles that we own and operate. We have to be good at managing. We have to know how to control our costs and keep things safe and efficient, liable. In a nutshell, our fleet management arm just lets our public and private clients tap into the same infrastructure and economies of scale and resources that we have and expertise. And it's not a one-size-it's-all program. If there's an area where it makes sense to partner with Enterprise, great. If it ain't pro, don't fix it. So everything's customizable. So obviously, we're not going to go into everything here, but if it has something to do with managing a fleet, we have to do it our own for our own. So the the primary, primary reasons our public clients partner with us are acquisition, funding, maintenance, fleet planning, and resale on the back, just making sure we're keeping the total cost of operating our fleet as low as we possibly can. Beyond that, there's sustainability goals, parting bookprints goals, right, being able to bring in electric vehicles at a faster pace than we would be with the traditional pay cash and run with the ground model. It's pretty typical for most government fleets. Obviously, you guys have the packet, but the quote in the top is from Jan Beerly, the who works with Basin County. Also, obviously, not too far away, not too different from a fleet size footprint. And we're in the seven figures that we say they're traditional. Model, and obviously, any other cities and what's not too far from there. Enterprise is a source worded vendor. City show is source ball member. I do want to mention at any point, if you guys have questions, please don't forget to go, uh, the need to wait until the end. The whole point of today is that everybody has a really clear understanding of how this works, where the numbers come from, why it looks to them. So we still have to do that.
See, says county saved seven figures where exactly?
If, so we'll, you know, try to make a little more sense for the financial model, but you just took what they had in spending and acquisition, maintenance, and fuel year over year, year over year. Basically, by taking advantage of the government purchasing power that you guys have, just by maybe, maybe the city in Shelton, but many factors, maybe it's part entirely of all government entities in Washington. So the way you buy vehicles, it isn't like how a commercial finds them. It's not how a retail company buys them. There's usually an opportunity to reduce costs or placing most of the vehicle types against that quite a bit sooner than you can traditionally use to capitalize resale. Just like we do with our rental fleet, if you don't keep our vehicles one to three years, because it's more expensive to do that. You just buy them really well, and we sell them really well. It turns out it's cheaper to do that. So if you take the cost of any, really any vehicle, whether it's a dump truck or a golf cart, there's three main costs that occur: depreciation, maintenance, and fuel. And when I say depreciation, I mean the purchase cost less the eventual resale value. And it's probably that second part that's, you see, is most often overlooked. The acquisition piece, you guys are already going to do is better than anyone else can, just by the nature of you being the government. But with any vehicle, when you buy a brand-new vehicle, it's going to lose value faster in the first couple of years. Eventually, by the time it's fifteen or twenty years old, it's really not losing any value. It's already fully depreciated. Fuel will start out in some fluctuations in price of the pump. It's cheap as it's going to be, but the price of the pump will go up over time. And eventually, a vehicle is going to lose some miles or down under two by the time it's fifteen or twenty years old. So that that cost will, it will cost more if people will be intercepted, you have to park outside, which is twenty, forty. And maintenance will obviously start out as low as it's going to be. Oil changes. At a certain point, you start spending your money to keep the vehicle running. Every vehicle that's on the road today has a spot. There's a point where it's certainly cheaper places than it is to continue. It's typically when the vehicle's still worth pretty good money, and before you've started doing current major maintenance expenses. It's the added benefit of safer, less reliability risk, using less gas, but those are the same dollar. It'll be different, like duty pickups, for example, are a lot sooner than you realize because the resale market is so strong, your purchasing power is so pretty compared to like an interceptor, which is incredibly expensive, you know, to acquire at the beginning of the fleet, and as of now, that's a percentage of the original cost. Enterprise's role in managing the fleet from a financial standpoint is to make sure we're in the right vehicles to begin with. Their acquisition costs as low as possible, which has its challenges with where the market is then. Make sure we're tracking, controlling, handling expenses, tracking resale value here every year, then using that data to just make smart, educated decisions and be proactive and make sure we're replacing vehicles at the cheapest point in its life cycle, whether that's fifteen years, for example. So we assign a strategy team for financial analysis for the fleet. We will come meet with coming to the city. It's often, it's like, really takes at least twice either for us to write out well. And that way, we're planning, we're being proactive, we're making sure to just hang on tight to the budget and lower the cost. Most governments, yeah, if you give too many examples, typically just run until the units fall off, right? It's always cheaper to buy transmission than it is to buy a vehicle. After a couple decades, that end up in a spot that's kind of tough to take out of. Mike mentioned earlier, the the way that all of our, in Seattle, you do, you give the one exception. The way that all of our government clients in Washington choose to pay for their vehicles through an equity lease, open-end lease, municipal lease. Obviously, the cash purchase, everyone knows how that works. You draw a check for the cost of the vehicle plus sales tax. Finance for just spreading out that exact same outlay over seven. So when I say an equity lease, I want to make sure that this part is super clear. Most people think of the lease, think of a dealership, and that's what if any of us went to a dealership and leased a vehicle, that dealership were closed down. There really is no place in a municipal fleet or commercial fleet for that. A dealership, sale lease is very advantageous to the dealership. It's essentially a long-term rental contract, rent-to-year stipulations, mileage restrictions. You have to turn it back in the day. They need you to turn it back in. And the most important, you get no resale value coming back. Dealership gets to turn around, they still will be able to lease another one. An equity lease is similar in that your payments are lower than they would be for the traditional finance. That's really where this lawyer is at. There are nowhere to terror penalties for mileage restrictions, and the equity is always property of the city. In this example, let's take a thirty thousand dollar vehicle. If we anticipate that the sweet spot to replace that vehicle will be in, we'll say, four years, to keep it simple with this. We would just finance the vehicle from thirty down to ten. If we regret, and it does make sense to replace the vehicle, twenty twenty-seven, the vehicles were fifteen, like we anticipated, we were replacing the vehicle. Drivers would deliver the vehicle down to Shelton. We'd pick up the vehicle that's being replaced, and we would go hand-sell it at our pocket to significantly outpace public auction. That's pretty critical for enterprise to be able to do, because that's where two mares are come from. On our final side, we're making most of our money selling these vehicles. So assuming we get the fifteen grand that we anticipated is a floor value, the five thousand dollar difference between the balance and the resale value is probably the same. Most folks can roll that into the next vehicle and save the tax benefit there. Those seats. Alternatively, if two thousand nine happens again, or the resale market's poor for whatever reason, that's fine, we're going to afford your vehicle, but twenty twenty-five thousand. We would just keep thinking, hey, this is the people that needs it. Or we just gain the balance out. Alternatively, if the resale market spikes like it did in the first year of COVID, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, or the ice recent worst. We might recommend replacing the vehicle. Most of our public clients who sold vehicles for a profit, we literally sold them for more than a paper. Just because the resale market's so extreme, and the purchase price that the government scales, so much better than what our retail one. Since typically how the funding mechanism works just allows us to do more with less capital while not having any of the drawbacks that the traditional.
So if there's nowhere to tear or mileage restrictions, what happens when the resale value is below book value? Do we pay you?
Well, we wouldn't replace it, first of all, if that were to happen. That really doesn't happen. We always make sure that the value is substantially under where we expect resale value. At the mileage that most municipalities, Shelton included, put on a vehicle thing of a year, and the fact that we sell it, even if it's near ten thousand, thirteen eleven, we're pretty confident we know these vehicles are sellable. And our core industries are municipal fleets and construction. So our baseline are our workfields, but yeah, they're pretty hard. You know, the sales fleets, those types, those would be the exception. The the largest.
Sorry. Because it's, because it's open-ended, that also likely means if these twice-a-year visits, we are subject to rate changes?
No.
No.
No, there are no rate changes once the vehicles.
So what's, so what's open-ended then?
Open-ended means, so as as opposed to a closed-end lease, where the turn-in date is set, and you have to turn it in. An open-end lease, you're the registered owner, you're the rightful owner. Enterprise can never make you turn it back in. It's more vehicles progress.
We could, we could opt, never.
Yeah. Open-ended, meaning we don't necessarily, we're not pretty determining the outcome at the onset of. Questions on a leasing part? From a maintenance standpoint, because we monitor maintenance on so many of our own vehicles, as well as client vehicles. For new vehicles, we're comfortable guaranteeing, if you have enough of them, you can look at a pretty good sample size and just generate a mix, right? So the city can actually feel the maintenance cost of being five hundred years. Impactful, but ask how the shares. And we don't do our own maintenance, say, for due exceptions, but there are words. We need local shops to be able to maintain our rental vehicles and our clients. There's four locations in Shelton, dealership, Leshwa, Valvoline, and Bennings. From an operational standpoint, all that would need to happen is drivers can take the vehicle to any one of those shops, bring one of the shops inside of Shelton. Hand over their mobile app via their phone or a maintenance card. At that point, the mechanic in shop speaks directly with an ASC certified technician in the enterprise. Her corporate office. We hold the entire life of the maintenance records, make sure that everything that needs to have safety and reliability sampling is performed, and then nothing additional is getting padded into the building. And we would be in a shop that that charge would just be sort of like department or customer. We can also do that on the vehicles the city owns today and will continue to operate. Should you wish. We can't guarantee the rate. I think it's six dollars on the source program. And then operates itself, so we would still vet the repair, make sure that everything that needs done is getting done, parts prices are aligned, hours of labor. We're looking at the cheat sheet. We know exactly what the parts are supposed to cost for. If it's up to the city, most folks set an upper dollar threshold, I wouldn't say a thousand or fifteen dollars. So anything underneath that threshold that indeed needs done, and the pressing is fair, we would just put a group of repair. You would pay a shop, and then we would go back on the city's next. If it's over the threshold where we don't recommend, we would have a, it's a bit of a laundry of folks who didn't see reach out to with a recommendation. And then we would wait for a group call. If a twenty-year-old vehicle needs four thousand dollars repair, we'll reach out and say, hey, we probably don't recommend doing this, but it's, you deal directly with the ASC certified technician. The city wouldn't do that. Questions on the maintenance piece? So here's where the city's leads, this is just the way, being the non-PD vehicles. If you just have that on your, you know, that's.
You're looking at. Yeah.
You can see it broken up by model year. Eighteen of the vehicles, eighteen of the thirty-eight are over, are twenty years old or older. They can see by year, ten, eleven, not uncommon, see zeros there is, learning is a little tight. A handful, right, but following years. The plan that we, that I'll show you on that slide is replacing the five oldest, or seven oldest, six, six, and then finally the thirteen remaining. There's one vehicle we would recommend. Keeping those leaves, it hasn't been driven enough to probably replace them.
So I do have a question, because when we were looking at the FCS report back in June, really had a hundred and twenty-one units, and only thirty of those were police vehicles. So right now, we're only looking at thirty-eight of those vehicles, trying to compare apples to apples. Can you, and then maybe a staff question, can you explain the distinction between a hundred and twenty-one, or even a hundred and ninety-one, or excuse me, the ninety-one versus this thirty-eight?
Yeah, sixty-three vehicles on the data I'm working on, which I have a similar analysis for PD that I broke down separately, just the nature of the two vehicles. As to the.
Well, we didn't include the vehicles that we currently have on our EMNR and the vehicles that Enterprise doesn't recommend, or really, it's worth like streetsweepers, tractor truck, those sort of slut-sized trucks.
Down as a one ton and below, it's going to fall pretty squarely in our bill house. Between a one-ton and meeting a CDL, six thousand GBWR, may or may not make sense to our enterprise, and certainly help fund them. Their lifecycle sweet spot isn't going to tend to be super soon, where it will be with most of the simple way later.
So if we did choose to go with this, we'd only be looking at a little less than sixty percent of our fleet being enrolled in this program. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay. Thank you.
So actually, I want to go through a couple assumptions. So there's thirty vehicles that are currently on a nineteen-year cycle. So you just take your last five years of purchasing, and if you were to continue doing that into perpetuity, vehicles riding today would come out twenty, forty. Current maintenance, twenty-one cents a mile, twenty-one cents a mile is municipal average in twenty-ten for like vehicles operated by cities. Probably a little higher now, but the goal of this is to be conservative and come out looking better than we put in our original analysis. Forty-two hundred miles on average, currently getting twelve miles a gallon. We're proposing just dropping by one vehicle, still at the top here. Average cycle that we're showing, there's two point two quarters, a summer ones for two, all the way up through five, being the highest. We can hear into the maintenance of twenty-eight eighty-six a month per vehicle. And use four dollars, or four dollars a gallon, it's our average cost for people. Obviously, that's not true. This orange for across the top, that's our measuring stick for any savings projections relative to the current budget. On a nineteen-year cycle, that means you buy two vehicles. Those two vehicles, aggregate vehicle type off the state contract, can cost just under seventy thousand dollars. Maintenance, keep those vehicles maintained to be thirty-four thousand, two hundred and nine. And fuel will be just under fifty-two thousand. For a year-in and year-out budget of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, average, average total budget to keep the fleet replaced, maintained, and fueled. In the first year, the five oldest vehicles, all which are twenty years old or older, we bring those down on equity leases, meaning the city would still own thirty-two of those, five would be on a lease of the price. Those five vehicles, lease budget would be forty thousand, six sixty-four for the entire year of the segments. You have one of those vehicles coming back after one year. We're anticipating being able to sell that for a profit. We replace that vehicle, in the first year, we have fifty-five hundred in equity from that lease back. Any resale value, fifty-five hundred of the balance. We assume, when we project resale values, we assume trade-in and market averages. We're not baking in the additional margin we expect Enterprise to sell. Maintenance budget would drop as we bring out the oldest vehicles and bring in brand new ones that are underpainted. Relation that's too much, again, oil changes, even if they weren't to, maintenance is guaranteed for a lot of this. Fuel would also drop about fourteen hundred bucks as we, again, bring out the vehicles in the worst fuel economy and we bring people to things. Which would be a savings to the city based on a typical year of thirty-eight eighty-two. Following year, we bring in seven more, and the oldest seven remaining could leave the city with twenty-five vehicles owned and twelve of these three. Lease budget capped at ninety-eight, seventy-three. We're anticipating being able to get fourteen thousand or two thousand dollars a piece for those vehicles. Well, more vehicles coming back, the fifty-three thousand. But some of the pickups coming back after two years. We anticipate fifty-three thousand in equity on the first instance. Maintenance will drop again as we continue against the older vehicles out. Fuel will again continue to drop as we get the average into the fleet, sign it higher. All-in to a fleet budget for that year, one oh six, or savings to the city is forty-eight three. This is why we assign a strategy team. This isn't a set, forget it. We need to come, make sure that we're hitting the numbers, be projected, and if there is a way to save more money by restrategizing, replacing vehicles sooner, people no longer, whatever that may be, bringing in electric vehicles, if that's the directions we'd like to go. For all things of people. Following year, we bring in eleven more, leaving the city with nineteen owned, eighteen on lease, lease budget be one eighty-six. And that year, we have twenty-one coming back from resale, six vehicles, three five hundred dollars a piece. Equity from leased vehicles coming back, be sixty-six. And maintenance is a little drop. Into state of cost of the city that year, fourteen thousand based on the two. We keep going through the the following years. Twenty twenty-seven is the last year of the owned vehicles, the newest vehicles owned by the city today. Twenty twenty seven uh is the last year that we own vehicles, the newest vehicles owned by the city today. Uh will be replaced with these vehicles, that's the last year you see. Uh so we can get eighty five hundred dollars. Of ninety nine coming back, uh equity leases. Maintenance budget in the twelve, and at this point, we're just fixing the maintenance and fuel budget, we're not anticipating any. Fee budget be one fifty seven without a wash, it's seven hundred dollars more than than typically. As the next five years go by, we continue to stick mostly to the original plans on PD. Continuing to replace the equity leases. Um at their target and capitalizing on the equity of those vehicles, so obviously more, because we have more vehicles uh coming back each year to take advantage. Altogether, we expect us to save hundred and seven, hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars for the next ten years. Uh and replace uh every vehicle the city's fleet uh at least twice. The average sustainable savings from bottom, uh middle, right, thirty three, nine and four. We, that's the average savings of the last five years of the model. Reason we do that is because the first five years of the model. Are supplemented by selling vehicles to the city on its operating today, which you're not gonna be there in year six and ten. Um so it's important to make sure that sustainably we can continue to lower the cost uh to the city. Uh not just supplement with selling off the vehicle, the city's assets. Any questions on this, where you move into the police model?
Maybe if you clarify for us, are when you talk about turning a truck in a year, let's say, we use, you know, passenger pickup truck. You go up and you go garbage, we uh we put city a shelf and stickers on the door, we put flashing lights in the grill and on the. Through how does that factor into that then, are we supplying that, pulling it off, do you care?
Yeah, it's a good question, though there there are no restrictions on what you do to a vehicle to update it. So there are a bunch of ways that can look, it's entirely up to the city. Enterprise can facilitate that and graphics install or remove, weekends install and then. Uh if the city does that in-house and continue to do so, then there will be no change. Uh as much of the equipment as we can transfer from one truck to the next, weapon will typically help last uh the term. One to five years. Uh so yeah, we would help the trust within height to be able to reuse, we put. Uh and there are ways you can burn them in the factory. Wanting to get as much stuff coming from the factory and reinstall as possible. We won't, we'll never sell a vehicle with logos on it. I don't know if that's a law or if we just choose to do it, but it's certainly not a good idea, so the logos on it. Every time we'll evaluate if it'll be less expensive to sell a vehicle with the equipment versus without, it's almost always cheaper to take the equipment off and to use it. She would say, and so by large. Who aims to reuse that equipment, whether enterprise facilities.
Who who does that now, we we buy a face car, puts the cage in and all of the, do we do that?
Uh we do that in-house.
We do.
Question, um as we all know, that insurance is going to hire and hire, are there any insurance benefits to doing this versus the way we're doing it now? As it costs for us?
Yeah, the GBA probably is one of the risk pools or.
Yeah, WCA.
Yeah, um you're the physical damage component, right, ensuring the vehicle is a very total or damaged. That will probably go up, liability should come down, right, it's everything left and a brace. City has an app update, to do it, we can make sure everything is autonomous breaking and make change, it's just. Uh really a lot of backup cameras, uh especially liability exposure goes down significantly. And there's a couple of years on that note to keep in mind, two thousand and seven and beyond. Uh this doesn't apply to one tons and above, they're on a different set of rules, but the two fifty, the one fifty and below. Uh in two thousand and seven, every vehicle will have any lock brakes. Usually asked. Uh twenty eighteen backup cameras uh and twenty twelve is electronic stability control, it's a little. Swiftly uh car reduce swiftly tire. It's up there with any lock brakes and airbags. If you can answer your question, I would expect your physical damage to go out of your life.
And like the liability portion is by far the largest. Portion of the premium.
Uh if a vehicle does get totaled, that you fire for enterprise, uh enterprise's total loss team gets over, this is the exact same team that our cars. People total a lot of our cars, both the drivers, their car, communication. When we do go to get a vehicle replaced uh or get them without that enable. Uh it doesn't matter what you pay for it, it's retail plus the cost. Typical that we would get more paid for that. Sets several. Yeah, so we were in total. Uh moving on to the police fleet, obviously a different animal. Um they're just so expensive, they get more miles put on them. But it's also more important that they're efficient. Uh and saving, they begin to. They need to go a hundred and she's back in town. It's not always super nice outside, uh here's where the police fleet stands today. Can't see it super well, but in the the top top, there's uh sedans, midsize SUVs, full size, that's used. Uh so that would be like your ground vehicle or charger, uh the full size SUVs would be the Tahoe or Durango, midsize. Uh so everything just not as light for life, uh but. There'd be some opportunity that takes some changes. So in the orange bar across the top, you can see a couple other assumptions for for some of the twenty one, twenty two cents a mile. Um there's twenty five vehicles monthly. Uh average miles are eleven thousand, it's substantially more than. We were putting in triple uh rate. Uh an average ten miles a gallon, which isn't a typical for police, we just all idle time. Um new vehicles should be fifty eight bucks a month, uh average maintenance cost. Uh and we have these on a five year cycle, so we keep them five years. Fifty sixty thousand miles on them. Um so if the city were by four a year uh to get back on track, though, we'd go on a six point two five year cycle. It's been bringing in now and replacement. That would cost two hundred and forty eight. Got a quarter million dollars uh a year, just an acquisition. Maintenance be sixteen three, fuel fifteen. Uh so total sleep budget would be four twenty six uh to keep us. On the first year, there's ten to be replaced, which. Uh the ten in this box on the left, so their O eight lines all the way up to thirteens. Uh lease budget be hundred and fifty nine seventy eight. Assuming we'd sell it currently, it's for a thousand piece, probably security somewhere that will take those. Uh maintenance obviously is gonna go down, uh fuel will go down. Total fleet budget would be two ninety one, we have to add new police vehicles. Is of no, we don't do police vehicles for every single number of clients. Different folks, different animal, uh we do for Mason County. And uh it's worked out really, really well. The next year, we have two more. Uh so we we get up to twelve on these, lease budget would go up to one eighty. Uh we're assuming we get two grand a piece for those. The next few years go by, we'll bring in six, then two. Uh and then finally five, and that will be our final year, that that went everything in five years, five years old. Uh we sell those eighty five hundred dollars a piece, forty two five, uh and we finally sell our first police cars. We over depreciate those significantly, it's your question earlier, because we know how to get. The the resale market for folks wanting to buy a sixty five thousand mile, these cars just not the same as the folks buying five hundred and four by the. It's a it's a lot tighter market, they're really, really expensive. So we we have ten coming back that year with about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars to equity. Assuming maybe use the typical police. Be not very good. Basically, we're repeating the exact same plan we went through the first five years, we just don't have any equity from the city. Uh from the own fleet, we just have that. Uh so maintenance with cap seventeen four, if you look at ninety two. There are three years where we anticipate uh an increase in cost from the typical, but here the city money is supporting. Uh all in at three hundred and eighty seven five. Last expensive to say. Also. Making some pretty marked improvements in uh current footprint uh and.
So Joe, I appreciate you um giving us the conservative numbers, that makes my heart happy. Um my question being, if we're looking at things like annual mileage and it turns out that we're way low or way high. What impact does that have on these figures and do we have any idea? What our average annual mileage is like for police fleet, it's probably harder to average for our other vehicles, but do we have any idea? City staff, what that is, because I'm assuming this is like your average with the customers you work with, right?
This is you.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh then currently, your police fleet drives an average of about thousand. Obviously, to your, but summer you're gonna go far, the winter summer you're gonna under. It might change in five years, but they all.
But I would I would imagine that Mason County's police uh deputies league goes, uh has a lot more miles than we do just because of the size of their jurisdiction.
Yes. Our easier in Washington votes tend to do. Twenty point five. Uh just. Your officers. Uh if you if vehicles drive more, fuel cost will go up and that's will go up and resale will go up.
Right.
Uh vehicles drive less, exactly for seconds. Sell vehicles for more, it's gonna be less than.
And the numbers we put into this throughout, what years is that covering? The reason I ask is, I imagine COVID impacted how we utilized our fleet, so I mean, are we looking at? A significant average here or is this kind of taking into account? Throwing out the outliers, I suppose, is the question.
We we looked at your entire fleet as it stands today and calculated annual mileage based on how many years that vehicle's been in service. Uh and how many miles.
So sixteen year average should be pretty good.
That and I think that uh contrary to most of our private vehicles, uh police vehicles uh still operated despite COVID. Um many of our public works vehicles still operated despite COVID, uh you know, those are critical jobs to keep uh city services running. Uh they were operating with only one person, but they were still operating.
Thank you.
Next slide is this question.
Talk about telematics.
Yeah, um it's good. We. We partner a company called GeoTab. If you're not familiar with them, they do Uber and UPS. I don't know, I guess, uh we picked them. Several eight years ago. When you're the biggest credit fleet in the world, pick your partners. We like about GeoTabs, at the time, they were the only, that the only store, the only company that makes a hardware themselves. To their end goal. The device is just plug in for a vehicle, meaning we can transfer them easily. Uh they look twenty five dollar a piece, that makes it not possible for a driver to pull it out. Uh that makes it sort of can it just in terms of to operate the vehicle or plug into tight. Probably the most, the thing we like most uh was the job they did with drivers fifty. In in tracking hard stops and speeding and cornering too hard. Uh and then from a liability standpoint, they'll actually recreate accidents, or even driver is an accident. Uh they'll generate a recreation of exactly what happened. Say that's where the active exact location and orientation. Um the gear of the driver was, every gold piece of info. Uh additionally, that all flows through the enterprise website. Uh your staff members will have to manage. It's all the data maintenance, these data tech, it's rated all through the enterprise website, and you have tapping interfaces uh with that and stuff. Uh it's also open source, so any other routing uh we saw where you guys might use. Like we already has a patch built in to use it with GeoTab, uh if not, it's open source. Uh do you guys use telematics today? So yes.
Uh no, not through the vehicles.
We haven't, we have capabilities, but we're not, we're not utilizing it.
So uh source well, a special pricing for Geotab, I think that's. It's about twenty dollars. Another thing we liked about it is unique. Most companies do three year and and contracts, so as soon as three years up, automatically sign up another three years for the return penalty. Uh GeoTaps twelve months and that's.
So telematics data weigh into your rates.
That that would be up to WCA. Uh I'd say it's with conventional insurance providers and stuff. But it's very.
It's also a conversation that we would need to speak with our bargaining partners about.
Yeah, it's a public resource. You know, I'm I'm a fan of managing those resources effectively. Uh and I would be as supportive of uh letting the telematics aspect of this, if this is something we pursue. Uh from a toward viability perspective as well.
The um what a lot of folks find from a cross scan plan. Under stabilization reports, yes. I know you need more access than this, let's say twenty five.
Fan that only gets four hundred miles a year or whatever.
Yeah, it exists for two weeks at a time, and maybe we, somebody needs to know about that, maybe you don't need to. At all. But people idling for hours at a time, sold out. I want to know that. Uh and then the the safety. I can tell you from my friend down here, the uh devices will be even the driver program uh alert, so if. Cars are set annoying ten overs or ten seconds or greater. It's not just that I flag the systems for any uh safety violation, I know that I wrote that violation. So when we get severance bill. It's pretty easy to. Okay, that's upside what's acceptable. Um we've also had a a driver get. Change wings into uh and the driver, he hit him with a wood chipper that he was forgot he was showing. Everybody was fine, but you know, the driver said we changed him. Not the other way around, officer gets there. Now the other way around, officer gets there. Officer's supposed to do. GeoTab was able to provide a report. Pointing out the vehicle's completely straightened and it's impacted right here. Same as the vehicle gets hit in a parking lot. The driver says, oh, I must have been hitting the parking lot.
Just want to sum up what we've been talking about in the past forty-five, fifty minutes. So we get our volume power increased. And we get maybe a shot at the wholesale price, right? We get an open-end equity lease. Which is gives us a better chance at a higher resale value. And then we service everything locally with the shops that we're already using. Okay, but we have to just replace our vehicles in this. Methodically. And then we decide, you know, what can we sell, what can we not sell when? It's appropriate, like. And if we do aftermarket stuff. That decreases or increases our values, then that's on us, right? We can't put spinners and rims and all this stuff. Because it decrease the value, it depends on what you buy the right bikes. So anyways, I guess that was the, that's what my mind summed this up. So is that accurate? Would you say that's fair?
Yeah, there there's one modification I would make, I don't enterprise, I don't anticipate saving money on purchase costs. Certainly will cost you money. The the pricing that you get comes from the manufacturers. And it's already is better than.
But we're getting theoretically a wholesale versus a retail cost versus an.
If you look at the state contract price, that we're really able to act for enterprise, we should this. I don't anticipate the cost or something. Kind of on that note, I should tie this earlier. Twenty nineteen and before, February twenty twenty, and before, we're in vehicles pretty. You can do it almost any month if you wanted to. Conversely, Chevy pickups openly closed on same days. As part of enterprise's job and strategies, please to understand what those windows are and make sure that we have our jobs in a row, so. We're one of the few people that got. Not the ninety percent of people. It's another wrinkle in doing our job well. So there's probably opportunity there, because if you do this, you have to go with you. The dealership will not give you that pricing. So the goal would be to order everything to be active and never happen. In this, within the one year. The vehicle will run. Get to a point where a cable. Bloods and engine. Now we're in a tough spot. You you might have to. There's probably some. Buying the same vehicle on the same.
If there were production issues like there has been the last couple of years with chassis and everything else, we just run the vehicle off.
For whatever reason, you ever wanted to. That's it's always the same.
So I understand, so we're still buying the vehicles.
Yeah, here's our registered owner and enterprise.
I meant a cop car, fifty-six thousand dollars, maybe paid for one, so we're still forking out fifty-six thousand dollars per car. At once, or?
No, it's spread over the the term, yeah, the lease term, basically.
Because right now, we're buying cars outright, we're paying cash for them, correct?
So what what we're trying to accomplish with this presentation and the FCS's FCS presentation that you saw back at the end of May, early part of June last year. Is one of your goals for us was to manage our assets in the most effective and efficient way possible. So we don't get into a spot again where our the average age of our fleet is eighteen years. For all the reasons that that were mentioned, maintenance costs, you know, everything else that goes along with it. Unfortunately, the ERR program that we saw, while a great tool is not something. That I I didn't anticipate, to be honest with you, the cost being that high in the initial year or the year after. You're looking at five hundred thousand dollars. That's a big part of our budget, of our general fund budget and all the enterprise funds. So we want to look at ways to get the most pain for our buck while accomplishing the council's goals of managing our assets. These are one of our big assets, it's a a huge chunk of our. Our asset base. And making sure that we manage those things effectively, so a decade from now. We are in a spot where we are saving money over what would otherwise be the case. I know this is a little bit new here and some of the numbers, you know, we're replacing. A car every two years, so we're on a, what was nineteen-year schedule? That's not sustainable going forward. Unfortunately, I mean, even if we were to replace two cars a year, we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars, and we don't have. A plan to replace it. Ten years from now. So we're just looking at ways that we can most effectively manage the city's resources and our assets. So when there's an emergency, the police car has to run. The police car has to be safe when there is an emergency, you know, the the public works truck has to be able to get there with crews that can fix the problem. And that's kind of the the goal of all of all of this analysis.
I I guess for me, you know, there's no disagreement on the efficiency step, it's, you know, enterprise, you know, your. Your pitch on this is great, it hits all the marks, there's there's a articulate cost savings. You're to handle a lot of some of the background, back office work for us, we can offload that, you know, there's a savings there, there's time suck on some of that stuff. But I got to remember the day that all the cars that the county ordered showed up and the public freaked out. Because, you know, the county's spending millions of dollars on vehicles they don't need and all this type of stuff, so my biggest caution is just. Our current format and way we do things is we we shouldn't be replacing our assets at a life cycle and. Now we're kind of going to be potentially replacing assets at a profitability scale, not necessarily at a life cycle end. And being able to articulate to that to the public, yeah, I mean, we're saving money over ten years, to me. As being a good steward of the funds, at the same time, I would really want to tighten up on utilization. And I would just expect, you know, Jeff, you would. You would come up with a plan to to track that and make those decisions when when we need to, but. Yeah, I mean, replacing every two years, the parks department rig, that's, you know, got five thousand miles on it or something, it's like, that's. That's kind of difficult to explain, you know. I and I fully respect the fact that law enforcement, public works, it's some mobile work center. And, you know, their their work environment should be. You know, comfortable and safe and all of those things, so again, support that. It's just, for me, it's some of the perception aspects, as long as we can cover that, got a robust enough plan to hit that. I'm pretty supportive and that. It sounds to me like, well, one of the things I always cringe about with leases is lease and equity in the same sentence is kind of interesting too, but. Now I know more, but yeah, what do we have to show for it? Do we actually count it as an asset? Because, yeah, you know, tax tax funded ventures like this, there's not a tangible. Thing that we own necessarily, but it sounds like technically there will be or could be, so. And entertaining those buyouts every five years might be a little bit difficult for me to swallow too, like if all we want to buy out this. This ring, you know.
Right, so several of the other. Cities that were on the slide that Joe showed earlier, Saltwood, there were a couple other ones. I've talked to and specifically talked to about their messaging plan on how would they communicate that to the public. Why it's important, that type of thing, because you're right, I mean, six new, brand-new shiny cars show up every year and people are. What's going on? But it's really about articulating to to the citizens of Shelton and Mason County, really, that. This is actually saving us money in the long term. And it's about making sure our people that provide the community services, like police officers, like the public works crews that. Take care of the streets and the bottles and everything, have the tools to do their job in a way that is most efficient. I think that's the biggest communication piece to share with with the with the public.
It's a it's a good comment to bring out, certainly one that's. Helping draft press press releases is a pretty common step. Head up any concerns, please be a responsible ones. Had a few clients win, points one words for their partnership with us, cost savings, the environment, all the facts. Studies, helping draft carbon footprint studies and overall outcomes. Make sure the public understands what's going on. You know, it's a product back, I know where lease sounds a bit bad. And with with the public, I think it would. So yeah, there's a public. On really quick on your announcement, the tax and accounting standpoint, there's some gas we changes. I think we have a CPA. Could be a better resource than myself. Yeah, yeah, so now there, you you do carry the asset on a wire. And if there's a lien holder, we fully carry that.
So this year, we'd be buying ten new vehicles, five regular and five police cars.
What we would want to do is gather gather feedback from the council. Decide which direction we want to go, or if we want to continue our current practice, which I don't. My perception is the the current practice is not acceptable to the vast majority of you. So we would gather input, we would decide which direction to go, and then we would plan to implement this program with the adoption of the twenty-four budget.
I I meant if we live with this program, that ten vehicles.
Next year.
Would be next year.
But we would want to know that prior to the window opening.
Yeah, well, there used to be a season when they all opened, not there.
But I think it does deals pretty nicely with our budget planning, as you know, we started in May-June for twenty twenty-four. So having that feedback, then we can get on the radar. Enterprise, should we, should council desire to partner with them, can then plan for that window to open and know, based on this analysis, or if it gets tweaked a little bit. What they would need to put in order for 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 our organization.
Sorry, I had a question of fuel, maybe I got a little confused, so we're still managing our fuel. Bolt fuel, correct?
If I remember correctly, enterprise has a program where they can manage that for us. But because it's kind of an hola car thing, and we have our own fuel pump at the moment, we would still manage our own. That may change in the future, and I'm sure we'd be open to discussions about that.
It's a very. Quick answer to that, cheapest things.
It will stick with we have.
Yeah, I would admit, so you could, there are three fuel cards you can put in the vehicles, but. It's always going to be cheaper to use the bolt field, maybe these officers can't. Maybe there's value there.
We were upgrading that system, weren't we, Jay?
We are upgrading the existing system, we're at different maintenance. The plan is to replace the system down the road. We would do an analysis on that and compare it to enterprise fuel purchase, same kind of.
Because you and I were talking about fuel tanks, and we were talking about the the readers and the cards and tracking mileage and all that stuff. And I thought we, so we were upgrading that.
Yes, there's budget for inspection of the tanks and to come up with the cost of these tanks are very, very old. And the new pumps, that sort of thing, to get an idea of where we need to go with the existing system. Would ultimately, we're have to replace the system, you know, probably in the next five to ten years.
Yeah, that's a part of the discussion surrounding the public works yard that you all considered at your last regular business meeting. And will consider an action at the next on February seven.
Sounds like a plan to me.
I have one question, will we ever consider full electric cars?
For certain types of vehicles, I think it's probably appropriate. Code enforcement vehicles, things like that, where you have lots of starts and stops, which are not going very far. For things like police cars, probably not, I can't see that happening. But there there's there's a mix there, but that also comes with a bunch of other considerations about whether you can get, I think they call it a phase three. Whatever, the thing that sends the electricity down the wire.
Charging station.
There you go, and you know, whether we want the rapid charger or overnight, you know, that all kinds of things to go into that. But I think in the future, there will be an opportunity to pursue that.
Or hybrid?
Or hybrids.
We're not outweighing all of the capital to save up. The next five to ten years are a hell of a really. My Silverado, my Silverado, my Silverado. It now it's some for clients, they're seventy-five thousand dollars.
I would like that instant torque, though. Any other questions that we can answer for you, or I'm sure if you have others that you think of. Will be Mike and I'll be able to touch base with Joe and get to the answers to those as we move forward.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, does council have any new items for discussion tonight? I guess not, so this means you're ended at seven oh six P M?